All in order in regular meeting for the Onyata City School District Board of Education, Wednesday, September 22nd, 2021. We'll start with the Fledgled Allegiance. Fledgled Allegiance.
United States. Intergovernmental, which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, infinite, just so.
I have a roll call.
Mr. Brown?
Here.
Mrs. Burnford?
Here.
Mr. Faeser?
Here.
Mr. Pataki?
Here.
Mr. Ianelli?
Here.
Mr. Beckery?
Here.
Mr. Tenny?
Thank you.
Resolved to approve the agenda as amended.
Come on.
Second. Ball of favor.
I propose.
Resolved to accept the minutes of the September 8th, 2021 meeting as presented. Any discussion? Ball of favor.
All right.
Approve. Extensions? Brings us to our first opportunity to address the board. If there's anyone attending the Zoom, you can use the QA function to put a comment in. There is another comment period later on in the meeting, and if there's something there at that time, we'll read it. Anybody in person have a comment? Thank you. Resolved that the reading of the non-certificated personnel memorandum, 2021-15 be waived, and that the action items dated September 22nd, 2021 be approved as recommended by the superintendent of schools. So.
Okay.
Especially.
Mr. Brown, members of the board, I, on tonight's certified and uncertified and nuns as well as our addendum, you will note that we have several substitutes and volunteers listed there, and as always, we're so appreciative of their service to our district. They do a lot, and we appreciate them immensely. You'll also find some extracurricular advisory advisors. So again, more folks taking on some additional time with our students in capacities that the students are passionate about. So we certainly appreciate all of them as well. And you will also note that Brianna Schwarm is listed as a long-term substitute. Brianna can highly recommend it after meeting with the committee. She is slated to take Mr. Mills's leave, and after speaking with folks, and seems like she's going to do a great job and be a nice addition to a very difficult position to step into. She's a certified teacher. She just, she not.
Will be at midnight tonight.
As of midnight tonight. Yes. So, so we're excited to have her, and we certainly welcome her and wish her well here. Great. All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Ball of favor.
Hi.
Hey, Bill, real quick.
Go.
Got a quick question. I know maybe it's a typo, but I see on me it says dates are 10/8/21 through 6/30/21, and that's supposed to be 22?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay. I figured it was just a small typo, but I just wanted to make sure we were on the same page.
Sorry. Anything else? Ball of favor. I propose. Extensions? Resolved that the reading of the teaching and administrative personnel memorandum, 2021-15 be waived in the addendum, and that action items dated September 22nd, 2021 be approved as recommended by the superintendent of schools. Ball of move.
Second.
Any discussion? I've covered both of my most earlier. The ball of favor.
I propose.
Extensions? Brings us to our superintendent's report.
All right. Thank you so much. Just in terms of the capital project, there are several warranty items that are being addressed in anticipation of closing out our capital project. Lisa and I are still working with day automation as we continue to move our buildings to a a single monitoring, control company that's going to involve some additional work later this year, but it will be good. Of course, of course, another reason why we're excited to have Mr. Plauts. You know, those systems are highly sophisticated, and a lot of those things are, you know, driven by software. So break down Mr. Plauts, and of course Bonnie and her team working through that. But it has simplified processes now through that degree of automation. You know, if for some reason, you know, there's an event in the high school auditorium, and for whatever reason, you know, the air conditioning or ventilation system is not working, it is something that can be accessed from one's phone, and you can go in and turn it on, and you can program it for however long you want that to run. So, you know, that degree of interaction is disbit for us. So we're excited about all of that, but we're also very excited about closing off this capital project once and for all. Relative to COVID, you know, we have experienced a couple positives, but of course, our layered approach to mitigating risks seems to be working well. It's not resulting in a great deal of quarantining. Of course, there have been some quarantines as a result of positives, and, you know, I know that's, you know, still unpleasant for parents, but our nurses are truly doing a great job working through all of that and collaborating with the Department of Health. Our county is still in a high transmission designation. As such, out of an abundance of caution, we have postponed our open house events in the district. Be very, very difficult, you know, with considerable attendance in our classrooms to be able to adequately physically distance folks on those evenings. So we're going to push those out until hopefully the time that we can do so safely. Along those same lines, we have postponed our homecoming dance. It's great that we're, you know, we're almost completely normal. We're just not there yet. We are going to continue with our other traditional homecoming events, Spirit Week in the high school, homecoming court, our athletic events. So that will still be certainly a nice weekend, but just trying to do all of those things as carefully as we can. Relative to transportation, our contracted bus service continues to be a tremendous mess. Last week, I spoke with Liz Sanchez, the chief operating officer for National Express, which is the parent company for Durham School Services, up in Los Angeles, California. I shared my sincere displeasure with the product and service that they're offering to us. I did offer what I feel might be some viable solutions to help us, and yesterday I met with Dave Armit, the senior vice president of operations, as well as their their business developer, director of business development, and Steven Schmuck, who is going to be replacing the, he's going to come in and replace the region manager that was servicing for Terminal. We've also learned that Charles Bronza is now, has been hired to replace a general manager that left a period of time ago. In speaking with him today, he has considerable transportation service, former connected state trooper, looking forward to working with him. And, you know, the drivers, our dispatch, Laura Hagen, the mechanic down there, they really are doing the best they can. They are doing what they need to do, but what they're lacking is management. And those conversations were had. It seems as though, at this point, they've heard our concerns and have moved in directions that I'm excited about. And one of those lines, Mr. Plauts is, Director of Transportation is doing a great job, and is not only, you know, stationed down at Silas Lane, but he has scheduled weekly meetings with them. Again, Laura Hagen, who is serving as dispatch, has been really working day and night, revamping the routes that were quite a mess. So we're not there yet. I feel like it's getting better already, but certainly looking forward to major improvements in the near future. So. Other than that, it's great to see, you know, our district back in the swing of things. It's very exciting. A lot of really neat stuff going on. Buildings are filled with excitement, and so that's a good thing. So I noticed today, and I hope it's a trend, that new cases in the county decreased a little bit today. The active cases decreased. So let's just hope that that needle continues to fall in that direction, and everyone stays safe and happy. Other than that, if there are any questions, I would like to report.
Hey, Tom, if we had any, obviously with bus runs in the morning, we've got some issues, and another reactionary action plan, as I can't fix that. Have we lost any extra activities at our school that our students are not able to attend because they don't have a driver to take them to where they need to be?
Yes. Mr. Mack, you've been feverishly trying to reschedule things and has had to move some events and reschedule them. Unfortunately, for a period of time, Durham was bringing in drivers from Schenectady to serve the substitutes. Toward the end of last week, when much of this transition was taking place, for whatever reason, they did not send substitutes for a period of days. And so now that, especially after our meeting yesterday, it seems like they have a good pipeline of substitute drivers. They have also discussed additional incentives to hire drivers locally. They've actually brought in a marketing specialist to see if they can help. But, you know, if anyone knows anyone interested in serving in that capacity, that, you know, please reach out to Durham School Services, because we could use some folks.
The reason I ask is because I noticed that kind of news that Durham itself, not only, not just only on itself, but the Utica area has got a large problem with their buses as well, and servicing their districts. And I could feel it. Obviously, it's coming down this way as well, but overall Durham is really at a pinch. We're all feeling it.
Well, and it's not just Durham. You know, it is.
I guess they should say across the board New York State, everywhere. Everybody's having a problem with their bus drivers. It's a film of seas, if you want to call it that.
They are for sure. And I get it. It's a tough time to do this, you know, sitting in a bus in this kind of environment. I know it's going to sound crazy. Here in Onyata, we're a little fortunate compared to what I'm hearing elsewhere, but I believe Utica School District has somewhere in the neighborhood of 129 bus runs as opposed to our 18 daily runs. So, yeah, well, Mr. Mack, he's been really good. I'm trying to work the schedule to make that work.
You know, when he was here at our last meeting, we asked this question, and his response about the extracurriculars was, well, I can't always get those drivers to take those runs. I don't care. You know, that's their contract. They shouldn't, that shouldn't be a question they ask. It should be here, you're taking this run.
Yeah. And, you know, again, you know, Laura Hagen, you know, even in her capacity, you know, many times she's leaving the terminal to, you know, to serve as a monitor on a bus or even a driver. And certainly with Mr. Bronza there now, that will, that will help. From what I understand, he also has a CDO, and it can help in a pinch. But, yeah, I'm with you. Listen, I know that there's a driver shortage, but in many regards, there's also a teacher shortage. There's also a substitute teacher shortage. And my, my comment to them was that I just can't, we just can't put a sign on a teacher who's not, on the door of the teacher who's not here, saying there's no class there. You know, we, we work through our contingency plans, and hopefully many kids don't even realize that, you know, and, and I understand and I appreciate, you know, the challenges that they're facing. But my conversation with Liz Sanchez is that, you know what? That definitely excuses anyone. That we're still paying you to serve our community in the best capacity that you can. So although I've heard that many, many times, what are you doing about it to fix it here? And so yesterday's conversation, especially when they had mentioned that they are working with the marketing specialists, made me feel better, but we'll have to, we'll have to see how it goes. So.
Tom, just like in a nutshell, aside from the extracurricular activities, the extracurricular bus runs, like during, during the normal school runs, what is their biggest issue? Is it the routes that our drivers don't know where they're going? Is it a timing issue? Is it kids not getting picked up, not delivered at the time? I mean, what's the?
I mean, you said it was a mandatory thing.
It might be a little bit of all of the above. You know, when, when they bring a driver in from Schenectady, you know, in most cases, he or she, you know, doesn't know the area. But the, look, bottom line is, you know, we were told that we would have bus routes by August 15th, which would have been amazing. Not only did we not have them by August 15th, we didn't have them 15 hours before the first student was to be picked up. You, you well noticed. When those routes got to me, it was just a data dump. It was an Excel sheet. It was, it was a mess. So I sat there, sifted through it, and everyone was asking what they could do to help. But there was nothing that anyone could do to help. You needed to, you know, one person needed to sit there and say, okay, that's an AM run. That's the same bus. That's a PM run. This is the time they're getting picked up. This is the kind of. But the times were wrong. The routes were taking buses, you know, much farther than they needed to go. And, and at that time, Laura Hagen was not in the capacity that she's working now. So one of my concerns was that, and what I expressed to these folks, is that Laura seems to be the person who can do all of this. And they reached back out to her, and they came to an agreement, and she stepped in. You know, our admins here will attest to this. There are times 10:30 at night when she's reaching out to us, asking this question. She's working hard on redoing the, redoing the routes. But honestly, Dan, it's a little bit of everything. And and I can tell you based on a conversation that I had today with one of the drivers, just the climate of the terminal seems much different as of late. There seems to be, and maybe Fred could attest to this, there does seem to be, it's not great, but it's certainly better. And I think folks are hearing, heard, and appreciated. In speaking with Mr. Schmuck, I think he is going to take a very different approach to leadership in the terminal, and certainly a degree of leadership that is aligned with us as a district, which was happy for me to hear. And hopefully that will pay big dividends in making everyone feel part of, of our mission. You know, everything we do, whether it's food service, whether it is transportation, whether it's the efforts of everyone in our buildings, should be to contribute to and enhance the educational product that we offer to our kids and their family. And when we have a component of that, in this particular case, transportation, that is detracting from it, it is, it is unfortunate. But it is getting our full attention. You know, we're all, we're all doing our best to, you know, handle concerns and parent complaints. I didn't ask everyone today, but I know my phone was quieter today relative to transportation issues. And I'm hoping that, I'm hoping that needle continues in that direction too. Mr. Plauts, I don't know what it was like in your world, but, okay.
All right. So. So the reason, the reason why I ask is, not that I want to start trying to problem solve right now, but is there a way that we can work into our transportation contract, because they're going to hit certain milestones through the summer with bus runs. So they've got to have this stuff to us, or done, prepared, you know? And if not, there's a monetary, there's a financial, you know, they don't get paid. They don't have their bus runs done by August 15th. If they don't have every kid on a bus run at some point in time, at some threshold, at some point in time, then they don't get paid. Or, you know, can we work that kind of thing into a contract or into our, I mean, just so that they, you were at the last meeting, but they had somebody here that was working on bus runs the night before school, and sitting in the back here, still finalizing bus runs back here.
Right. So you all know this, you know, I, I was all over the place that morning because, you know, my, my son was in the hospital. I wanted to, I was hoping, because I was told I was going to have those runs by 8:00 AM, that we could, you know, I could get to, you know, to Mrs. Nodling, that she would be able to post and put out to our families. 8:00 AM came and went. I was like, it's 8:00 AM, no runs. It's 9:00 AM, no runs. It's 10:00 AM, no runs. And it was probably 11-ish when that Excel sheet came to me. And this is after me sending emails saying, this is how you sent it to me last year. This does me no good. This is the format I need. And it's a fairly simple format, but you can't, you can't have individual students' names on there. You can't have students' addresses on there. I just want, I want a pickup time, the street name, or the bus stop, and then the drop-off time. And it was, it honestly took me hours to sift through that. Reggie, Reggie knows, again, everybody was asking help. There wasn't a lot of anything to do. You know, we, if you remember, you know, Lisa and I went through a lot of this with Vernon. We went through a lot of this with Vernon. So anxious to see how the next few weeks go, but yeah, damn, I'm sure that, you know, we could work with Mr. Lynch. By the way, John Lynch is going to be retiring from Hogan and Sarzinski. He's been a, certainly a great resource for us over the years. So we certainly wish him well. We're going to miss him. But if he be, we will get him before he leaves.
Whatever information you need by a certain time, yeah, you should work with that contract. It should be done by a certain time. Any minor changes or whatever, but.
Yes.
I should be working on it the night before. I mean, that was just, it was incredible.
Were you working?
Yeah, I was working.
Yeah.
Thanks, Tom.
Okay. Thank you.
Crack some skulls on me.
Any other discussion? All right. So move to the business manager's report. Resolved that the reading of the financial memorandum, 2021-13 be waived, that the action, financial action items dated September 22nd, 2021 be approved as recommended by the superintendent of schools. So, second. Discussion?
Yes, we have a contract with Skidney for a 40/60 split for a speech pathologist. And sometimes we do that when it's beneficial to our district. Bosie was not able to provide that service, and if they could provide it, it wasn't as efficient as sharing with another close by district. And we do that in Cooperstown with another therapist too. So that works out well for us.
Who's the 40? Who's the 60?
We're the 40, and they're the 60. So it's a Skidney employee, and then we just.
I'm trying to see that.
Yeah. And then we're renewing our contract with Facet for the athletic trainer support. We have some surplus items there. The Atsigo will renew our contract with Atsigo County Department of Social Services for the social workers in the elementary schools. And that's, that's a great deal for us. We get the social workers in each of the schools, and we pay 14% of the cost to the county. So that works out really well for us. And then we had some donated school supplies, which we always appreciate that. And then today, though, with another huge donation, which I think Fred saw, like three pallets of school supplies for more. So we should be set with supplies for the students for the year, which is great. The response to the risk assessment audit, you have that as a backup. I'm not going through all of that. We did go through a lot of the details in the finance and audit committee, and that will be a standing item on that agenda. So we'll talk about it every month. We'll see what changes have been made. Just to note, all of the recommendations, they're not all financial in nature. So, you know, there are IT things, there are policy things, there are, you know, financial segregation of duty things. So it's pretty lengthy, but that is submitted to the state. And then that third column we put on there to put the district response. So we'll update every month, you know, as we move along. And the budget amendment is to basically wipe out the cafeteria, the student balances at the cafeteria fund. And these are balances that have built up over the years. For whatever reason, you know, people haven't filled out the application. They haven't been able to pay for whatever reason. So that would wipe out all of the student balances as of June 30 last year. That's $10,369. And then yesterday, we were going to use the cafeteria, you know, balance, the unbalance in there. And today, we found out that we were eligible for some emergency funds through the child nutrition. And we're getting $9,638, I think. So that's going to almost pay for all of these balances to be wiped out. So that'll be really nice, I think. And all the students are free this year. So it'll be really nice to start everybody, you know, on ground zero, not having that balance moving forward, not having the high school have to say, hey, you're going to pay this, you know, to get your diploma and things like that. So it'll, I think it'll be a nice fresh start for a lot of people.
I just, I want to make a comment about the audit. I looked at the audit and the findings as them nitpicking now. You know, I think everything in there was kind of, was nitpicky. So I think, you know, that's a testament to Lisa and the job that she's doing and the way that's been run. So it was essentially a pretty clean audit.
And that's a district thing, so it's not all. Well, and I was going to add, you've been able to address a lot of the things on there very quickly too, so that they're not even considerations anymore. They're checked off. So.
Yeah, there's one on there for something that needed to be on the website. Yeah, to that level of nitpick.
Other discussion?
If I could just, you know, very appreciative of the Oak Park Rehabilitation Center and Walmart for their generous donations of school supplies. You know, they're down at Silas Lane now, but Rebecca, Mrs. Vanderwerken's going to go down and sift through those and divide them up appropriately based on the supplies and where they should go, and give those out to the buildings, and hopefully these will find their way to the hands of students who need. So certainly appreciate their, their support.
I agree. Okay. Ball of favor.
I propose.
Extensions? Thank you. Brings us to our second opportunity to address the board. Anyone in person? And no one online? Then we'll move on to committee reports. Start from.
I have no committee report at this time. Just real quickly, I want to say thank you, Tom, for all the hard work. Congratulations. You're a grandparent. I know everything that comes with that, not only your son being sick and then through surgery, and then the mess we've been dealing with. Durham, I mean, you've had a lot in your plate. So thank you for everything you've done for us here, and continue to do, and most importantly, your efforts towards the students, students who are, that's so important. The, I just wanted to say a challenge to the students. I understand the homecoming dance would have been canceled. It's, yesterday. It's, yes, it is not the greatest thing in the world, but we're still having a homecoming. Enjoy yourselves, students can have a good time if one night who want to come back can still have a good time, just be safe. And I know it's always a big time around here is that with the events we have and the opportunity for everybody to meet and greet, but just everybody just continue to be safe so we can somehow, some way get this thing bit under control and get it coming back to where we were a few months ago, not in a other direction. So on that, I know those are good information.
I don't have any committee updates at this time. I would like to congratulate Mr. Flauts on his position.
Well, finance, not yesterday, but a triple amount of time is covering the things we've checked off on that audit. And I would just, you know, I I follow on Facebook all the schools. So I really enjoyed the last week and a half and all the activities that are happening in in our school. And I, you know, I know the students are just happy to be back. And as a parent who had a senior in the first year of of COVID, it'll be okay. Homecoming will be okay. And and these kids are are just happy to be back and they'll enjoy spirit week and the football game and it'll be okay.
All right.
Yeah, I have no committee reports either, but welcome, Fred. It's nice to see you here. Glad to have you on board and congratulations, Tom, on becoming a grandparent. And so good luck with that. Thank you. I did want to just mention too, to the people that are home that are watching you. You see me on my phone during the meeting. I'm actually on our board agenda. We don't have really, we have an agenda, but we don't have all the stuff. So you see me, I'm not like surfing. And I walked in tonight, saw a modified girls volleyball game going. That was great. The stands were full and the kids were playing and we just won 25 to 10. I've been to a couple of football games, I've been to a couple of soccer games. So it's nice to see everything back, back in action. All the students, all the students inside the building and everything. It's a disappointment, I think, that we can't have have a dance, but, you know, we have to listen to the recommendations that we have from our health advisors. And they say it's not safe at this time. And I guess we we move ahead, be happy with what we got for now and hopefully we can do it in the future. So that's all right.
Um, I just want to echo some congratulations to Tom on the level of shifts and some of the other comments. I I it is exciting to see schools gearing up and the kids getting involved with everything and just hearing about kind of everyone's happy to be back. So all the best to the staff and students as they continue this year and.
I have no committee reports. I really have nothing more. You guys covered everything, so I did a.
All right, oh, and my congratulations and and thank you, Tom. I mean, everything that's been going on the last three or four weeks for you personally. And then opening up school and Durham not being helpful at all. We appreciate your efforts and and everything you've done. And I know you've put a few miles on your car and, you know, been on your phone. And we certainly appreciate all of that.
And if I can echo what Lisa said, we have, we have a tremendous team. And it's a, it's a team effort. So thank you.
You're welcome. You know, again, with the dance, we can be hopeful that maybe, you know, that I know the dance doesn't involve our elementary kids, but maybe we'll have a vaccine shortly for our five and up crew. And I would, I mean, I would anticipate that next year, this vaccine will be one of the things the state requires. So, you know, that that may help us, should help us get back to this normal. We're trying, so desperately trying to cling to this. That's all that I had. With that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn for the purposes of special education and. So. All favor. Close. Or adjourn.